At this time of the mayor and board workshop, workshop discussion pertains, we received a certificate from Tennessee Comptroller's Office recognizing the timely adoption of our balanced budget. They commended the city of Sweetwater for their budget submission and confirmed they have approved it and it represents a sound financial plan. So we are happy for that. A few months ago, myself along with the commissioners asked Jessica, the city recorder, if she would write a grant program asking the East Tennessee Foundation to administer the funding of a relief program for some of our local businesses, especially those out on the 322 out there that, I mean 68 out there. I'm not pulling Joe Biden here. They were hurt for business. We know what COVID has done. And in her expert way, as she always does, she got busy. And we did, through the East Tennessee Foundation, along with the city of Sweetwater, was able to provide a $10,000 grant to help fund toward this mission. Myself and the city board reviewed the programs and the Sweetwater Business Relief Program was established in July. We took applications from Sweetwater businesses and during this pandemic, and we have had multiple businesses apply for this grant. And what we want to do here tonight, we want to award, I think we've got four, I hope they're all represented here, I'm not sure who all represented here, but we want to give you the first round of this grant funding that you deserve for your business. We want you to know, we appreciate your businesses. We know what it is to own a business and operate a business and sometimes it gets rough, especially what we've been going through with, it really is rough. So we have checks tonight for the Dinner Bell, Huddle House, Quality Inn, and the Roadway Inn. Are all of you here? Okay, good. So I'll call you one at a time. And what I would like you to do, and I would like commissioners, since you were a big part of this, to just come right behind us here as we take a photograph because y'all helped make this possible. And when I call your name and you come up here, will I just, just stay here and we'd like to get a photo out with you all. First is Diane from the Dinner Bell Restaurant. I would appreciate what you do.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate what you do in Sweetwater and Dinner Bell Restaurant.
Appreciate what you all do.
You want to take one individually or?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, here Diane, get a hold of that.
Perfect. Diane, if you want to just stand right here and we'll get a group shot.
Next, the Huddle House.
Do we have to get a group shot?
Oh.
No, go ahead. I'm gonna do it.
Huddle House.
Thank you. Thank you everybody.
Thank you guys so much. Appreciate all that. We'll help a little bit. Appreciate what the Huddle House does. Thank you. Thank you guys. Appreciate what you do, especially in Sweetwater. Thank you. Roadway Inn. Thank you guys. Thank you guys. Check me something out. Thank you. We appreciate you very, very much. Come on. Now, if you, you four will come right over here. Like this? Yeah. So over here with this mission. That'll work. That'll work. You guys are most important. Roadway Inn, we can get you a check.
All right, one, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you guys. I understand some of you have to leave. We also want to thank the East Tennessee Foundation for being along with us on this. We appreciate you all. We also have a new project for downtown that we have been working on for a while. It will assist in drawing new visitors to Sweetwater. And we've been working with the utility, Eric, the utility board, Jess, you and Eric have been talking about this, you want to?
Yes, so about a year ago, Eric approached us. He had been to a conference that had an opportunity to have an electric car charging station in downtown. Right now, there's not one between Lenore City and Athens. So to be able to be on the map for all the owners of electric car vehicles, you have to have a station where they can get charged up at. We first talked about doing it in the downtown parking lot, but that would mean getting permission from the railroad. And rather than go through that, we decided it would be better to put it near the depot because we already had the power infrastructure in place there and we have plenty of open voltage available on that electrical panel behind the depot. So if you're going away from the train car and the depot's on your left, you take a left after the depot and the power pole's on that backside between the depot and I think that's High School Street, is that right? It's between, it's between the depot and the electric warehouse. So that road, we own a power pole on the back of that. We would probably need to get the street department's assistance in just striping off a place on the actual street and paint. I think you do it in green for electric car charging things instead of blue like for handicapped, but I'll have to look that up. But just designating a parking spot right there for them so that nobody else parks in it. I think you all know that nobody ever parks there anyway, so I think we'll be fine. But then we can, the utility board is willing to provide all of the infrastructure of the actual charging station at no cost to the city as part of a partnership in this. So there's no cost to the city. It would enable us to have an electric car charging station downtown. And the big thing is we could get on the map so that people would know they can charge a vehicle in Sweetwater. It does take a couple of hours to fully charge an electric car, so they're not just gonna sit in their car wash around there. They're gonna come in, at least to the visitor center and hopefully to the shops and to eat and hopefully to help the taxpayers a little bit too. It's free to the city.
I mean, free to whoever charges.
Whoever charges, yes. It is a free service to them. They can come charge a vehicle at no cost.
You know, they just got through that.
There is a way to meter it though. So if the utility board ever did decide they wanted to meter it, you know, they could.
There's a GM that's running a all-electric car plant over there. So that's something in the future. Okay, good, yes. Keep us informed on that. All right, for Monday night, on the agenda, there's gonna be some new ordinances. The planning commission have been working, what, five, six months?
Yeah, altogether about eight months.
Eight months. We have went over ordinances. We have redone some that were outdated and wasn't applying anymore. We have, I think you've got a list in the packet, some of the things. I'll turn it over to Chuck and give us a kind of description of what we're gonna be bubbling off for Monday night.
So as the mayor said, the planning commission, with Rupert Hawke's help in mind, we looked at our zoning ordinance that's on the books was by and large written in 1980. There were some changes, major changes down in the eighties. And there's been very few, some small changes since then, but very few. We've had a lot of growth in Sweetwater since then. We've had a lot of change in the types of businesses that operate in Sweetwater. We've had changes in even the way how the residential properties are structured. So what we did is we tried to take our current ordinance, look at the things that didn't make sense anymore and some things that we have seen in Sweetwater that maybe we didn't have defined in our ordinance and try to include all that information so that going forward, it's not gonna be perfect and there may be some changes, but going forward, we hope we can get another 20 to 40 years out of this ordinance the way we did one before. In your packet, I'm just gonna go very briefly over some of the, some of the changes. Well, ordinance 983, the first one is basically definitions. What we did is we took some of the old definitions that were in there, we added some wording, changed some wording. Couple of things to note, business services is one definition that we added in there to try to not necessarily identify exact types of businesses, but business services so that any business that operates to service another business, whether it's an accountant or an architect or they sell appliances, computers, those kinds of, it identified a business service rather than a specific business. Same thing with personal services. We also added a definition for recreational vehicles. And the one that we didn't have that comes up from time to time is a short-term rental unit. We added the definition for what one of those is. Everybody here's talking about the Airbnb breakfast, Airbnb. Some people are using their residential homes for that. We actually have a definition for what that is and then we've also addressed it in our zoning code. Ordinance 984, the next one, is the actual zoning, it defines the zoning districts itself. And this is what a large part of the rewrite was about. We didn't change any of the zones, so all of our zoning that we had in place before, A1, R1, C2, C3, all of that is still the same. We just sort of cleaned up what is allowed in some of those districts and then made it a little more clear going forward. One of the things that we added to this particular zoning ordinance is a line on page two in 14304 that says, uses not expressly permitted or prohibited. Basically, that means if it's not in our zoning ordinance, it's not allowed. That kind of keeps the guessing game out of it for our planning commission. It also keeps the guessing game out of it for people in my position as the city planner when we're looking at zoning. The first one, A1 and also R1, the biggest changes there, we defined, we have some tracts in town that are large acreage tracts and we're beginning to see that some of these people would like to have a residence on one part of that piece of land and then maybe a mother-in-law residence or for their children on another piece of that property. And we didn't really have anything in our ordinance to address that. So in both the agricultural and the R1 district, we added a line that says if you have over 15 acres, it's an active farm and it's in the green belt and you would be allowed to put two residences on the same tract of land. So we added an acreage requirement so that we don't have it just happening everywhere all over town. We also in the R1 established a minimum lot size. We had that before, but most of our lot sizes through the, through all of the residential districts were so different that it didn't make a lot of sense. And so we tried to normalize things around the 12,000 square foot mark. So everything you'll read in here kind of goes back to that 12,000 square foot. R2, the biggest difference in R2 is we did allow nursing homes, assisted living facilities, group homes, residential treatment facilities, mental health facilities. And those are, those are some things that were expressly defined in the definitions that we talked about. We didn't really have a clear zone as to where those types of things could operate within the city limits. There's some fair housing law that kind of regulates that we do have to have some place for some of these things. So we decided the R2 area would be the best fit for that.
That's where most of our low-income housing units are zoned now, right?
That's correct. Low-income housing as well as basically multifamily housing is what that is. So multifamily housing. We do also allow some of these particular pieces of property, when we rewrote the ordinance in some of our commercial districts, but largely in larger tracts.
Do I have a question?
Yes, sir.
All these changes you're making, is this that goal for the state to be approved or is this just a local approval?
This is a local approval.
Okay.
And this is coming as a recommendation from the planning commission.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah. R3, not a lot of changes in that one. The next big change, if you will, is in the C2 district, which is on page 11 and 12. If you look at page 12, item number G, we had a, in the C2 district, which is our downtown business district, Main Street, basically. There are a lot of other areas outside of Main Street that are included in the C2 district. We allow residential apartments in the upper level of those buildings, but we did not allow any sort of residential use in any of the ground floor spaces. This particular ordinance identifies that the ground floor can be used for that, but only if it does not front on certain streets. So if it is not fronting, and when I say that space is not fronting, on Main Street, Monroe Street, Walnut Street, Morris Street, Miller Street, and North Street. Basically, what we tried to do as a planning commission was keep, keep these streets that are our commercial sales tax generating area available for, for commercial use only, but then also identify some of the areas, like some side streets, some back areas that may have a, a back office that someone wants to convert into an apartment that comes out on a ground level, they're now able to do, do some of that. We had that, we've had that come up several times since I've been here. I think it's something that we can utilize going forward in our, our C2 zone. C3, the biggest change in it was we defined a minimum lot size. We got into a couple situations, but one of the most familiar was how small the Sonic site was when we started looking at their rebuild and their parking and things like that. So the planning commission looked at about 12 different commercial lots, different sizes, lots on them, and we, we decided to go with a minimum lot area of 22,500 square feet. That's just a little bit bigger than what the Sonic site sits on, but it would have probably accommodated them a lot better going forward. C4, the biggest change in the C4 is we did also add a minimum lot size for C4. C4 are those little commercial districts that exist kind of in some of our neighborhoods. The one I like to use, the example I like to use best is, is like Bellamy's Grocery or On Out, Allen 711, that, that sort of area. We developed a minimum lot size of 18,000 square feet. The other thing we do allow, depending on the size of the property, our self-storage units, provided that there's no outdoor storage on the sites. So that's a little different than what we had before. C5 probably had some of the biggest changes in it. And by and large, C5 had a lot of businesses that were listed as permitted uses that were very specific, very specific businesses could open in the C5. We tried to change that and look at it more along the lines of business types, retail sales, business services, personal services, instead of identifying certain businesses that go out there. This is also the area that we located the recreational vehicle parks. Y'all recall, we've had actually two of those in the last couple of years come up. So we actually placed those and gave it a definition in some of our supplementary provisions that I'll go over in just, just a minute. The next sections that got a lot more information put in are our industrial sections. M1 is our light industrial. That's primarily all of the industrial area that we have in the city of Sweetwater for most part is owned M1. So we're looking at businesses that don't create a lot of things like noise, smoke, waste, dust particles, vibration, those kinds of things are considered light industrial. What we did, rather than, again, rather than identifying specific types of businesses or specific businesses, we tried to identify types of businesses, but we also put some performance standards such as in the M1, no equipment, machinery, or heating and air conditioning systems shall generate excessive noise levels that can be heard on nearby properties. This is in large part because a lot of your light industry parcels will sometimes be near a residential area. And so we don't want that in those areas. Same thing with vibration, dust and air pollution, those sort of things. Minimum lot size, we established at two acres. That was pretty much in the old zoning. It gave some leeway on that, but, but we felt like as a planning commission that two acres was a good site for a light industrial use. M2, we actually expanded on quite a bit. And the reason for this is we've put, you all have put a lot of work in and money into an industrial site at the industrial, at the interstate. Hopefully sometime within the next few years, we'll see the fruition from that. And what we wanted to do is we wanted to be able to, if there was a heavy industrial use that wanted to come to Sweetwater, we wanted to be able to identify what that might look like for the city of Sweetwater. So it, it is a little bit more, things like compacting, shredding, recycling centers, processing centers. We do still have the two uses permitted on review in, in those two areas. The automobile and junk salvage are only M2 and then also the adult oriented establishments are also only M2. But the performance standards are a little bit different. So in a heavy industry, you're gonna have some noise level. So there is an allowance for, for an excessive noise level during certain timeframes and you're probably gonna have some vibration. So there's gonna be, there's some allowances for some of that as well as heat, storage. There's gonna be a lot more outdoor storage in a, in a heavier industry like that typically. But in, in none of these ordinances did we get into anything where we were storing hazardous, hazardous chemicals, caustic chemicals or flammable material. So we wanted to be very specific, heavy industry, but we don't want to endanger the people of the community. Minimum lot size, we established at five acres. That's based on multiple sites that we reviewed all over East Tennessee actually. And we decided that five acres was a pretty good figure for that. Most of those sites are lot, much larger than five acres that participated in. TND on page 24, the only change here is we added a line for assisted living facilities and nursing homes. Back a few years ago, they had actually had a piece of property inside Willow Creek rezoned to R2 to allow for nursing homes. Rather than, and, and when we redid the zoning map, we took it back to TND because we wanted it to actually all be one community with one zoning. But now we're riding into the TND zoning that assisted living facilities and nursing care facilities are allowed so that it keeps the, the traditional neighborhood development together, but then allows this one other use that, that we've actually already approved. Most of the rest of that is just renumbering because we had some other things go on. Ordinance 985, supplementary provisions, the biggest change here is on the customary home occupations, if you want to operate a business in your home, under, under the current ordinance, it had to be like five or six specific things, some of them that I don't even know what they are. A milner, shoe repair, I mean, there were some businesses there that just, you know, really don't exist anymore. So basically what we did is we wrote this to say, if you want to own a business in your own home, that's fine. Just make sure from the outside, it does, it still looks like a home, still looks like a residence, there's no outdoor storage, it doesn't create a traffic issue, any additional traffic, and it doesn't create any additional garbage or refuse. Those are pretty much the main things that we stuck to on the customary home occupation. Gas station restrictions, we did not have a setback requirement for the canopies. We added that. Under 413 for site plan requirements, we basically just cleaned that up, added a few more identifying markers. So when someone brings a site plan to the city or the planning commission, there's some identifying information that they have to have on their street address, tax mark, map and parcel. Just simple, simple things like that, who's the, who the applicant is. It's things that you think would be on there anyway, but a lot of times they're not. The only thing we changed on that was the wording in the storm drainage was, was actually inaccurate. It said, our old ordinance says that the amount of storm water runoff shall not be increased and shall be accommodated on site. Well, anytime you put asphalt down over ground, the runoff is gonna be increased. It's just gonna happen. But what you can't do is increase the rate at which that runoff is coming off of that property. So we, we reworded that to say, the rate of storm water runoff shall not be increased and detention retention shall be accommodated on site. So any detention areas have to be located on the site that they're proposing. The only change, other change, we added a section for recreational vehicle parks. Basically, it laid out if, if you're going to operate a recreational vehicle park, how that site has to be set up, minimum of five acres, each site has to be a certain size. The streets within the development have to be a certain size. There's, there's basically a lot of, and these requirements were basically established for one of the uses on review that we, we looked at, one of the two that we looked at before, we established some of these then. But this actually puts it in our zoning code so that if anyone wants to operate an RV park, here's what you gotta do. It also establishes performance standards for mini warehouses, minimum size of five There's always a question that comes up on mini warehouses of whether or not they can have a gravel lot or has to be paid. In this particular ordinance, we clarify that it depends on if it's in an industrial area, it can be gravelled, if it's in a commercial area, it can be paid. There's some differences there. And the last ordinance is probably the simplest one I've got for you. The only change to this is if someone wanted to put a antenna up or like a church belfry, something like that, there were no height limitations. But we also didn't have anything that said how close that particular tower or whatever it is, how close it was to the property line. So the only thing we changed there was if someone wants to, let's say, put a flagpole in their yard and it's a 20-foot flagpole, there has to be at least 12. and it's a 20-foot flagpole, there has to be at least 25 feet from the flagpole to the property line. And what that allows for is if something fails and that whole tower, belfry, whatever falls, it's going to fall on the property that it's on and not affect the neighboring property. It doesn't affect where they put the pole. They can have it in their front yard, wherever they want it. They, it just has to be a certain amount of footage away from the property.
So, any flagpoles that are already there are grandfathered in.
Are there, yeah.
But if someone comes to us and is trying to put a new flagpole on a very narrow lot, that's, they may not be able to do it. So, when we pass this, we, there's a possibility in the future that someone could not be able to fly, name that flag, whatever it is they want to put in there and get very upset about that.
This is the highest they could, they could still get us-
They just get a shorter flagpole is the answer. Okay, you can have your flag, you just got to get a shorter pole, yeah. I don't want this to become the city of Sweetwater is not letting people fly the American flag or something like that.
All right, thank you, Chuck. Any questions or comments?
One question, Joe.
Yeah.
When this apartment deals in business, does that have to be owner operated or can it be rental property?
It can be rental property. And I will say this, any of those units do have to comply with building and fire codes as well, so.
Second part of that question, is that the property owner you deal with, or the renter?
Property owner.
Okay.
Anything else? All right, we will vote on this. Thank you, Monday night, on the regular business meeting. On our November agenda, there are four new ordinances that we will be voting on. The recommendation of the planning commission, I'd like to commit to the planning commission. We have pulled in a lot of overtime hours on this. I think you'll verify on that what you said.
Chuck and Ruth have literally been working for months on this. I mean, they, they, they put in there overtime and of course, we, we took it on as part of our training. But it, it has been gone over once and twice and sometimes three times. Some, some items have been debated longer than they probably should be, but it has been discussed thoroughly.
Jess, you have something more to bring up?
Yeah, I didn't get this in time for the workshop packet, but I do need to add something to the November 2nd meeting. We've got three properties that it's now not legal for us to collect assessments on, so I need to write those off. I checked with MTS, they said I didn't actually get y'all's vote on this, but I hate, I hesitate to write anything off without explaining to you all what it is and let you have a vote on it. It's $1,400 total between the three properties. All of them have been things that we've taken through the property tax cell and either they sold for less than what they owed for the assessment or they sold to a new owner. There was a good legal reason for why they didn't have to pay the assessment as a new owner, so we cannot collect them anymore. So, I'm going to just ask for you all to vote on that on the November agenda and I'll add that until your next packet.
Yeah, that will be our agenda, Monday night. We want to invite you to a ribbon cutting on Friday at 11:30 at Michael's Building on Oak Street, which is now a brand-new Airbnb. Anything else? You know, the bar has got anything. Our plan going good for you guys? Okay. Thank you again for being here, Mr. Somers. Appreciate it. We appreciate what y'all do. Thank you very much. Anything else? We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.